Good evening. Welcome to the January thirteenth, 2025, meeting of the Stillwater City Council, our first meeting of 2025. Happy New Year to everybody. This time I will call the meeting to order. I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up tonight, under Proclamations, we have a proclamation recognizing a local student, Strand Tally, for his accomplishments in civics, which is pretty exciting, something I think we as a council are excited to recognize him for. So Strand, if you want to come up here and stand, I'm just going to read this. You don't have to make a big speech or anything unless you have one prepared.
Speech.
Whereas Strand Tally, student at Stillwater Junior High School, placed second at the state finals of the National Civics B. And whereas the National Civics B is an annual competition for students in grades six through eight that encourages young Americans to engage in civic knowledge and contribute to their communities. And whereas we believe that informed and active citizens make for a strong country, economy, and workforce, and that our continued prosperity depends on the strength of all three. And whereas Strand represents these civic strengths, and we take great pride in his accomplishments and his hard work and dedication to civic leadership. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby honor Strand Tally and appreciate him for representing our community through esteemed civic student leadership. Been working for a while to get the tallies here, but Strand's got football and wrestling and all kinds of different stuff he's doing, so appreciate you all coming. All right. Councillors, it takes us to item four, the Consent Docket. Questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
I move approval of the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on consent. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. We will drop down to item seven, Public Hearing. Seven A is received public comment regarding a request from Josh Wilson for Blue Sky Buds LLC, doing businesses bricks cultivation for a special use permit to allow medical marijuana dispensary, a property addressed as 121 South Main Street in the Commercial General District. This is CC dash twenty-five dash eleven. Do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Diana Hood is here.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Diana Hood. I'm the Associate Planner, presenting on behalf of the Planning Department. As stated, this is a request for a specific use permit for the property addressed as 121 South Main Street to operate a medical marijuana dispensary in the Commercial General zoning district. Here's an area map of the subject property. It's located on the east side of Main Street in between Elm Avenue and Maple Street. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. There are two other medical marijuana dispensaries in the vicinity, Doc Greens being across the street, across Elm Street to the west, and likewise Cannabis being directly to the subject property's north. This is a pre-existing business that is seeking to move from their current location at 135 South Main Street to the requested property at 121 South Main Street. Here's a street view of the subject property looking east off of Main Street. This is an existing building that they are hoping to relocate to. Here's a zoning map of the area. As you can see, it's located in a commercial strip along Main Street with single-family residential directly to the east. And across Main Street to the west is the edge of our Form Based Code District with T5 zoning. The current ordinances regarding medical marijuana dispensaries allow for the location of dispensary in the Commercial General zoning with a specific use permit. The future land use map was adopted at the time of the comprehensive plan and is used to predict desired uses in the area, and the comprehensive plan calls for commercial uses in this area. Are there any questions for staff?
Councillors, any questions?
I do have one. The dispensary license in our packet expired Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So have we confirmed they indeed have a current dispensary license?
We have confirmed that they are in the process of renewing with that with the OMMA. That process can take anywhere from three weeks to a few months, but we have received confirmation that they have requested that renewal.
Okay, and if that renewal doesn't happen, then code enforcement deals with it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, Diana. This time I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on this item particularly? All right, I will close the public hearing. Diana, is there a... Do we do Planning Commission on these?
Yes.
Do we?
Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of four to zero.
It's been a while since we did one. All right, councillors.
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation to approve the special use permit. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Item seven B is to receive public comment regarding a request from Jason Johnson for a map amendment to rezone property addressed as 701 High Point Drive from multifamily intermediate and commercial general to commercial business, CC dash twenty-five dash twelve. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Diana.
All right. As stated, this is a request to rezone property located at 701 West High Point Drive from multifamily intermediate and commercial general to commercial business. Here's an area map of the subject property. It's located near the intersection of Washington Street, Boomer Road, and High Point Drive. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. Located to the north and northeast is Boomer Lake. To the south are more apartment buildings, and a block further to the south is located Cimarron Plaza, which is the site of some current construction for the expansion of the high school. Here's a street view of that subject property. It is currently... It currently has several apartment buildings, and the applicant is requesting to rezone so they can convert these buildings into condominiums. All right, here's a zoning map. As you can see, there is... The property is mostly zoned for multifamily intermediate with that bottom-left corner being zoned as commercial general. To the south and southeast is located similar zoning with multifamily intermediate, and to the east and west are zone commercial general with the area north and northeast zoned public. The applicant is requesting this rezoning to, as stated, convert the existing apartments into condominiums, commercial business. The requested zoning is the only zoning district that allows for condominiums. Here's a future land use map. As previously stated, it was adopted with the comprehensive plan and is used to project desired uses in the area, and the comprehensive plan does call for commercial uses in the Ghost and Associates is here on behalf of the applicant. Are there any questions for staff?
Councillors, any questions? I have a... Just one. The initial... Or the existing zoning here is a very odd shape. Are we gonna... Is it gonna leave like a weird strip and a tiny little triangle of this RMI if we rezone this specific... It's got that little triangle that doesn't even seem to cover a full lot below it. I don't underst... Like, that's very odd to me.
You're correct, it is odd. The... There's plenty of reasons why it could be the way it is, but because the RMI zoning dead ends there, it shouldn't like cut off any of the zoning from continuing.
Good. And that strip to the north of it, to the north of... It looks like the street. I don't know if that's just a boundary line difference on the map, or is that a different piece of property?
North of High Point?
I'm sorry, north of the commercial... The sort of hatched section.
Ah, I see.
There's like a little section of green there. Is that just because of the drawing is weird, or is that gonna be a problem?
Oh, I can't recall what's there.
Yeah, it's like in the street that's showing.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry. That's the... The way that the layers are drawn on the map, it's just extends further than the property lines.
Okay, that's not like a separate little piece of property.
Correct.
Okay, just checking. Councillors, further questions? At this time I will open the public hearing. We do have a representative from the applicant here. Mr. Ghost? I assume you're just here for questions?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councillor. Stephen Ghost, Ghost and Associates, 113 East 8th, here on behalf of the client. He's here if you've got any questions too, but Diana pretty well covered everything. It's our only option to allow condos in this community is this specific zoning district, so.
Sounds like you think there should be more options.
I have made an application as such, so.
Good to know. Councillors, questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this item. Was there anyone here who was anticipating to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Diana, what was the Planning Commission's recommendation on this?
Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. Councillors.
Wrong. I move to approve the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote. We vote a five to zero, item is approved. Seven C is received public comment regarding a request from Pioneer Investment Group LLC for a map amendment to rezone property addressed as 3118 through 3124 East Fourth Avenue from small lot, single-family to two-family and multifamily districts, CC dash twenty-five dash thirteen. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Diana.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. As stated, this is another request for a rezoning at the properties addressed as 3118 through 3124 East Fourth Avenue. The request is to rezone from small lot, single-family to two-family and multifamily. Here's an area map of the subject property. It's located between East Third and East Fourth Avenue adjacent to Mockingbird Lane. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. As you can see, it's located near and inside a residential neighborhood. To the south of this property is a different property that has a quadplex and a duplex on it, and the subject property itself has an existing quadplex structure on the south half of the lot. Here's a street view looking south off of East Third Avenue. As you can see, there is the quadplex that I just mentioned. The current structure is legally non-conforming as an existing quadplex in the zoning district, RSS for single-family residential. So the rezoning to two-family and multifamily will bring the lot and the structure back into compliance with city code. Here's a zoning map of the subject area. You can see to the north and east, as well as the northwest, is zoned small lot, single-family, RSS. To the west, southwest, is located two-family residential zoning, and to the south is RTM, two-family, multifamily, and that is the zoning that the applicant is requesting. Here's the future land use map. The comprehensive plan projected for this area, high-density residential uses. Are there any questions for staff?
Councillors, questions?
Mayor, if I may. Diana, can you explain also that although this is the rezoning, it probably is relevant for council to know that there is also an existing PD that we used to call it, but PUD on the property?
Yes, there was a... There was a PUD overlay that was adopted and placed on this area, I believe in 1984.
So, yeah, so although the zoning classification change is needed before additional multifamily can be developed on this property, the PUD will still have to be amended, which will require public notice in a hearing.
So is a PUD what allowed the other multifamily establishment to be there?
It looks like that, and it also may have at one time been allowed in that zoning classification. So because now the code doesn't allow a PUD unless you also have the requisite zoning classification, it does need both the zoning change and an amendment to the PUD. So this is step one, just for your information.
Thank you.
Councillors, further questions? This time I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item. Is anyone here to speak? I will close the public hearing. Diana, what was the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Councillors.
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved as well. Thanks, Diana. Item eight is General Orders. Eight A, Presentation and Discussion on the Proposed New Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility, including Schematic Layouts, Cost Estimates, and Community Impact of a New Facility. Candy, starring.
Candy, starting with Engineering Department here to tell you all tonight where we are with Animal Welfare Project. I'm presenting... We have Roy Stevens, he's gonna present a few slides with you. Barrett L. Williamson is also here from BLW Architects that will be taking you through the renderings and the cost estimate. In March 2024, we brought the presentation to council where we finalized the site selection, and that is to be located up along Hargus Road near the airport. These items all along the left side give you a reminder of all the benefits of the site, not to minimize the fact that it's next to Sandbourne Lake where we have great trails for the dogs to be walked and taken into nature. We were asked recently about the alignment of Hargus Road and as it relates to the animal welfare sites. So this site is to do that. I know it's pretty busy, so I've got Buster the Dog here to call attention to the animal welfare site. I also have a spinning American Airlines flight heading over the top of the airport, and in between those two is the alignment of the new Hargus Road that will occur once we get our land conversion finalized, and that's where Hargus Road will be. Of course, along this is gonna be a ten-foot sidewalk once that project happens, so it'll be another benefit of having a site here. To answer the question about how the condition of the existing facility, this is a long list of problems. I won't read them all to you, but generally, the HVAC is lacking, inability to provide clean air, there's not good drainage, so what drainage is there is clogged a lot. The energy efficiency and the R factor of the building is poor, and it's not an expandable site due to the... How it's situated on the site and the way the building was constructed. All of these pretty much create an overall lack of ability for this facility to meet the community's needs. It's a challenge just for them to be in it day to day.
What is the existing square foot... The square footage for the existing building?
All in with... All in with what's just used.
Captain Roy Stevens, Stillwater PD. All in with what is specifically used by ours, including the isolation building, the exterior building, things like that, right about thirty-four hundred square feet.
Okay, thank you very much. In addition to that, the building was built in 1984, so it's forty years old. Here's some examples of how crowded it is. Whenever we run out of space for the dogs, they set up temporary kennels in the garage. The garage is also the cattery, cattery, so it's really a cat garage, and when we have the dogs in there, they are right next to the cats, and they're all stressing each other out. The office picture in the bottom is all they have for office space. It houses five animal welfare staff, and any volunteers that are there for the day have to work out of this office. The surrenders and the adoptions all happen out of here, medical quarantine, any kind of officey cash exchange for the adoption process, everything happens out of this one space, and it's not adequate for what they need. Also, to get to the kennels, you have to walk through the cattery, so if you have allergies to cats, by the time you're ready to get your dog, you're also sneezing from that. We wanted to share with you some price comparables, so it's not very often that Stillwater has this many projects going on that we can have local comparables for the fire station. These are all also based on the construction price plus FFNE. FFNE is furniture fixtures and equipment. It is not design, it is not any extra utility relocations or extra alarming systems or anything else above the construction of the building in the FFNE. For the fire station, we had three work packages. They totaled about eight million, and then adding the FFNE onto that, it's a total price of eight point five million with fifteen thousand square feet. The per square foot price is five sixty-seven. The other comparable we have that's being built right now is the terminal building. It is a thirty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five square foot build with construction and FFNE costing twenty point six million, and that's a six hundred and fifty-seven dollar per square foot number. Neither one of these house animals, and so our architect provided us a recent build for the city of Moore, which is just right along I-35, that was completed in 2024, and it is a fifteen thousand square foot facility for eight point six million construction and FFNE, and that is a five seventy-three. So for a location adjustment, the best information, these two sites, Moore and Stillwater, don't have good RSME's specific data, so it's not real easy to go pull what are the compared... What is the location adjustment from Moore to Stillwater? So I can't give that to you, but I do know during our fire station project, in working with Phil Thomas, the OSU rep that kind of helped us through the CMAR project, he promised us at the time that we were gonna pay ten percent more than the fire stations that were just bid in Edmund, and he was right. So although there's no location adjustment here for that, you can think of that as a higher price to build the same facility in Stillwater. The other thing that's not adjusted is time, where the fire station is gonna be final in mid-2025, the terminal's gonna be final in mid-26, and Moore's animal shelter was final in '24. All three of those should be inflated for price escalation a year or two or two and a half to make all those numbers higher, but even without all that and just the simple comparable purpose of not having to defend a lot of that escalation, the number here averages at six hundred per square foot. So just keep that in mind for Barrett's discussion of the pricing that he's seen. So progress to date, the left column just lists what we've gone through so far and what we're working on. The right side is showing that we, as we went through this first phase of design, we really kept at the forefront of our mission to be practical and purposeful in our design and not go fancy or extra. It was just to meet the community's needs and space and functionality. We wanted more natural light for the animals. Right now, none of them, the dogs and the cats don't have that. The cats, the cat garage, if you open up the door, they have the natural light, but they don't usually have that. And we also wanted a safer, more efficient space. I presented this slide before as the overall schedule that we're targeting. It's not much different. If we are lucky enough for the voter to get the passing vote in April, then construction should be complete in the winter of '27, '28. With this, I will ask Barrett to come up and talk about the facility.
Thank you, Candy. Good evening, council and mayor. Yeah, so what we were tasked with in, I would say, October twenty-second of this past year, we've been on a pretty fast and furious journey together, but was to develop something that was efficient, durable, and followed best practices. We partnered with a specialty architectural firm, Animal Arts, out of Boulder, Colorado. They have designed more than fifteen hundred shelters across the United States and written articles in journals and made numerous presentations at, you know, animal conventions and so on. As you can see, that was the initial view of the facility. We went through a needs assessment phase, and that was basically to determine what capacities do we need, and you can see those down at the bottom. Currently, you have forty-five cats and dogs together. The new facility is at eighty-nine, and in the event of an emergency, we can share kennels and get it up to a hundred and fifty-four, so if there's some kind of natural disaster, we can bump it up that high for a short time. Here's some examples of current housing versus new proposed housing. Again, for the kitty cats. Food prep, the Sally Port shown on the right, our Sally Port in mind with keeping towards frugality in the design. It is an open-air covered structure, so it's basically a carport with a fence around it and two vehicle gates. Once we get into more detailed design, we'll look at seeing what it would take to close that in and heat and cool it and completely enclose it like a garage. We do have separate lobbies for adoption and surrender, which is right now you walk into the facility and there's an office and you do everything there. We've also got meet and greet space. So here's our site. Hargus Road, as you can see, is up there to the top left of the screen. We've designed this facility. It's a very simple rectangular building. It's got expansion for the dogs on the east, it's got expansion for the cats on the west. We've got separate entries for adoptions and surrenders. As you can see on the bottom left, there's three spaces on the parking lot. Those are for people that come in that are on timeout that have to pick up their animal. All the people coming to adopt would come in on the north. Here's an area for a future dog park. Outdoor training and exercise yards. The Sally Port where the animal control officer will come in and close the gates and be able to take that animal out of the vehicle without it escaping and take it into the building. And then we've got separate staff and volunteer parking. And one final thing, when we designed this, we looked at passive solar orientation, but we, instead of being due east and west oriented, to where we could take advantage of the north light on all the dog kennels, which you'll see on the next slide, we did skew it slightly to the southwest, and that was to help it be more visible when you're coming up from the bottom right on Hargus Road to be able to visually see the building. But we're able to manage all the west sunlight that comes into the building with this orientation and still take advantage of a lot of daylighting. So here's our floor plan, and I won't go into detail. The green areas are the public areas, lobby intake. Blue is all the dog kennels. Purple is the cats. The orange are isolation, and then the offices are kind of that mauve color, and then the utility and storage are in the center, and those don't need exterior windows. So all the kennels have exterior natural light coming directly into their spaces. The offices have direct visibility to the reception desks, so if you're short-staffed one day, the director or one of the animal control officers can come in there, and they can serve both sides of intake and adoption with one person if need be. Here's a view from Hargus Road. And again, we like to spend money on the toe of the shoe. which basically means that, you know, the things that the public is going to see from the street and walking into the facility, increase the budget a little bit for those components. And then as we get back to the back of house, you know, we tone that way down. And that way, it makes a great impression on the public and, but it's not just spending money anywhere you have a chance. These two sides are visible from Hargus Road. The backside, which would be the bottom and the right screen, will have a metal panel on them. We kind of turn the brick around the corner and then we go to a less expensive but still durable finish for the exterior. Here you come to the Y in the parking lot that kind of directs you for adoption or surrender. And you can see we've got a large shaded canopy over the entry. There is a fence underneath there. There's a meet and greet right when you walk in the lobby. Or you walk into the Bestiville, you walk by a fence where there could be, and once you're in the lobby, there's a glass wall and you're looking right into a get acquainted room, which has a door to this fenced area that's underneath the canopy. You can see on the, and I don't know if you can see my mouse, but these little metal panels are what's going to be screening the west sun from coming in. These are all the kennels along here. So they've got full width glass along those walls. And then this is the community room right here. The interior, this is intentionally conceptual and we think there's lots of opportunities to work with beautification groups. Once the project moves into the next phases to do enhanced things and involve community to do beautification for the interiors. And we've got the dog adoptions back this way. You can see here, this is the meet and greet, get acquainted. This is the little fence outside. And then this is where the cats are. And then this is the community room over here. And then from the evening. As far as the budget, we've got our cost estimator, David Battle, he's been doing this and we've worked with him for like 30 years. We've got a 14-page detailed breakdown of every item that goes into this building. And if there's probably 250 line items, he has taken into account Stillwater's unique multiplier in that how it's slightly more to build here than it is in the metro of Tulsa and Oklahoma City. So we're at 12,200 square feet, $590 a square foot, for a total of 7.2 million. And with that being said, here are, just to remind you, some of the comps. And I would mention that Moore was $2022 when that contract was executed. So there would be, technically for the 573 on that, there would need to be a two-year cost adjustment for, you know, with the Consumer Price Index or some other inflationary calculator.
So along that line, that 590 is today's dollars?
Yes. It's actually April's dollars.
Okay.
And that being said, I would like to end with, you know, together as a team, this facility has been thoughtfully designed with both doggies and kitties in mind. I'll turn it over to Royce now. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. I am Captain Royce Stevens from Stillwater PD. I'll go ahead and apologize. Nothing spins on my slides or anything like that, but I have been a police officer for 34 years, 26 of that here in the city of Stillwater, 13 of that as a canine handler for the city. And I'm proud to have the Animal Welfare Unit as part of the Operations Bureau and now have the pleasure to command. As seen on the slide there, education, adoption, reunification, and enforcement, those are the foundations of our animal welfare missions. We've continued to meet those missions within our community and even our surrounding areas in times of need. Obviously, that's been challenging due to the increased needs within our community as it grows since 1984, when our current building was built, and the limitations that that facility places on us. You've seen in the previous slides, the existing facility is woefully inadequate. However, the heart of our staff, volunteers, they continue to fulfill these missions despite these obstacles. So what does a new facility mean? It means many of the services we now provide today and many for years to come can be enhanced and improved through this new facility. It will increase our kennel and cattery capacities you've seen, as well as intake areas, provide spaces for volunteers, communities, community members, local schools, organizations, creates a healthier environment for our dedicated staff, for our community, and of course, for the animals. Through services that only animal welfare provides, we'll be able to decrease the stray population even more, answer calls for help better, and help keep neighborhoods, roadways, parks, and other public spaces safer for our community. It's our desire that the new animal welfare would be a facility that our employees enjoy working in, where animals can receive a second chance while being well-cared-for and a source of pride for our city. This has been a very long process. It started five and a half years ago for me, trying to get this building. And I just want to take this time to personally thank the council for your continued support in allowing us to pursue this important health and safety initiative for our community. We're going to turn this back over to Candy Storing to discuss our next steps.
In the order they'll occur, the next presentation right after this one is Kristi Kluck and our financial advisor discussing bond scenarios with you all. Should everything go well and the bond numbers look good, we'll bring a resolution on January 27th for the council's consideration. We'll have an election on April 1st and with voter approval, we'll continue design just after April 1st. Any questions for staff or Barrett? We'll answer those now.
Councilors?
Couple of questions. One is the, you said, this is for the architect. You said there'll be natural daylight for all the areas. Will those windows be openable? Will there be fresh air coming in or will they be closed windows?
No, they'll be closed. And the reason for that is because when we design these kennels, one of the important things is fresh air and to minimize disease spread. So it's almost like a hospital building where you have separate atmospheres in the different kennels and so that the windows are not operable. They're for daylighting only.
Okay. So a couple of questions for Captain Stevens. How do we, and I should know the answer to this, but I don't, how do we interact with Tiny Paws? Because Tiny Paws has their own cat program, so talk to me about that.
So my understanding of Tiny Paws, they have their, you're correct, they have their own mission and they are primarily neonatal kitten care. So it's a very specific mission that they have, takes specific equipment and staff to do that, specially trained. It's frankly not something that municipal animal welfare would be set up to do or be cost-effective for us to do.
So another question, where are the other animal welfare facilities in our area? What's the next closest one around? And specifically, does the county have anything?
The county does not have an animal welfare center. Perkins would be the next closest animal welfare center. It's very small, but they do have one.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a comment. I just wanted to thank staff. I know this has been an extraordinary effort to work with the community for citing and locating and just to understand the needs of this critical infrastructure. I really appreciate Captain Stevens, your framing of this resource. It's, you know, vital infrastructure for the health and safety of our community, not just for the cats and dogs, but for the people that live here, as well as the cats and dogs. It's kind of a marker, I think, of our just overall well-being in our community, I think, to have this critical infrastructure in place. So thank you for framing that way. I hope as we progress in the bond conversation that we continue to present that to the public in that way.
So one of the things that I certainly am hearing, I'm guessing everybody else is hearing too, is that this seems like a lot of money for an animal welfare facility, right? If you're somebody in the community who has, is being asked to vote on this, it's 7.2 plus when we get to the next presentation, which I won't be part of, it's actually 8.75 million, all expenses included. So what steps have we taken to make sure that we're keeping the costs where they need to be and we've designed this, designed the facility we need for the, for now and for the future?
Well, in the first part of the program, and Barrett might help with the building itself, but in the first part, we evaluated the intakes and they looked at numbers as far as the data that we did have available to know what do we need to meet. And then you reduce the size of the facility by providing these kennels that you can double by using a door or so that it becomes two, a better word than...
Doggy doors.
A divider. And so in that way, we have more capacity than, for those times, than a larger building with the double size we would have. When we also went through with BLW and they showed us pictures, every one of our staff are very in tune to what need versus want means. And they showed us some pretty fancy animal welfare facilities, like resort-style looking facilities. And we said, no, we want what we need and we're not a fancy, we're not going to ask the public to pay for something that's just looks and appearance and extras. We have the medical space we need. We have the Sally Port we need. We have the storage we need. We have the food prep we need. We have the kennels we need. And the community room, we believe that we need that, but if we get to a place where we're at, and you know, the price looks different, we would start pulling back on, that'd probably be the first one to go, even though it's very needed for the community in education and a space for classes out there, things like that. So I think to answer that, I'll just tell you, that's the culture of the team that pushed this project to where it is today. We have frugality, as Barrett mentioned, in mind the whole way through.
Okay.
And when we're, oh, go ahead.
So I was just going to add that presuming council moves forward with this and we move toward an election on April 1 and we're out in the community making these presentations, that answer needs to be part of the presentation. So go ahead.
When we're building this, what do we anticipate? Is this considered a 30-year building, a 40-year building, 50-year building?
The exterior walls, I would say in a nutshell, at least 50.
Okay.
The exterior walls are going to be load-bearing concrete masonry units with a brick veneer. So they're going to be pretty bulletproof. And the reason for that is an animal shelter is a lot like a hospital building, except your patients pee and poop everywhere and they have claws and teeth, so they're scratching and chewing on things. So all the interior walls where the animals are are a concrete block, then has an epoxy paint coating on there. So that's where you get into a lot of costs. And then the, you've got to have hair traps, you've got to have a lot of floor drains, you're constantly using semi-caustic disinfectants that are going down, you know, so they've got epoxy floors to be able to, you know, withstand that. And so all the materials in there where the animals are are just, have to be super durable.
So do you anticipate that 50 years from now, with good maintenance and we do, the city does what it needs to do to maintain the facility appropriately, we're looking at replacement or we're looking at renovation?
I think it would be repair and renovation. And I would also say, yeah, I mean, you know, kennels, if we get the right kennel equipment, the kennels last a long time. They have a lot of stainless steel components in them. But there's going to be things like, you know, epoxy paint's going to have to be replaced, epoxy floors are going to have to be replaced. But you should get, you know, at least 10 years out of that floor. And we'll spec stuff to where we get that. And I will say one thing, is we had a lot of really great ideas in this short timeframe where the design was compressed. And you guys have a really great group of people. We've enjoyed working with all of them. There's like eight people that we've met with weekly. They said no to so many ideas that I have less hair. Oh, we got this great idea? Nope. So what we've done is, I think, has been a balance with aesthetics and budget. And with it being a rectangular building, you know, it's fairly simple structurally, but it's got steel bar joists. It'll have some steel beams in it. It's got steel roof deck. It's going to have a commercial-grade, you know, 20 to 30-year roof on it. I mean, it's going to be well-built.
I think that's another important point as we talk to the community about it, that we're not, you know, we, our existing building almost was not enough, almost immediately.
Yes.
And so I think talking in terms of this is a 50-year building, this is almost tripling the square footage we currently have, I think those are all, more than tripling, almost four times the square footage. Excuse me, my math was bad. I think those are all important points to make as we're talking to the community about this and letting them know the improvements that this will allow for.
We're actually working with the city of Lexington on a small shelter project. And at a bare minimum, they're going to be at 2,400 square feet. If that just gives you some kind of reference compared to the 3,400 that you have. So, and they're a population of 9,000.
And overwhelmingly, when you look at the floor plan, as it should be, it is overwhelmingly dog areas, cat areas, and medical areas. So it's not, there's not a lot of fluff in there outside of what we need to house animals.
I would agree with that.
All right. This will happen long after I'm around, but let's talk about expansion. If we need to expand this, have you considered that in your design so it can be expanded? I see Candy's going to stand up here.
Yes. Yeah, so, so here on the site plan, if you, this is the community room. This is where you come in, the front door. This is the lobby. This is the community room. These are the catteries. So we've got this to where it can expand out and double the lobby, community room and catteries on this end. And there's really not a limitation to how far it can expand out to the east. So you could just keep taking these kennel groupings and just repeating them right on down. And same with the indoor-outdoor runs and basically relocate this out to here and, you know, subsequently increase some of your service space as well. So very much taken into account for.
So, and this is not probably, probably not a question for you, but if we were to expand this further to the east and get off of this particular lot, do we have to go back for more FAA approvals or are we good to go?
Our boundary already considers an expansion. If we were going to, I don't know, 75, 125, we would have to go to FAA and say, we want to expand this. We want to purpose this part of the site for expansion. And based on what we went through with Airport Director Kelly Reed, it was a pretty easy yes for the use of this site for this. So I don't think there would be problems with that.
Okay, thanks.
Councilors, further questions? Just to be clear, no action particularly on this item, correct?
Correct. I'm going to hand it over to Kristi Driscoll. Uh, sorry, Kristi Kluck.
One of the Christies.
We'll move to item 8B on the agenda, which is presentation, discussion, and possible action on proposed funding of the Stillwater Animal Welfare Facility with a general obligation bond at an April 1, 2025 election, including discussion of the cost of overall estimated budget and bond terms from Kristi Kluck. I'll just note that Counselor Clark is leaving on purpose because of his day job and not discussing bond issues.
So I'm Kristi Kluck, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, here to talk about overall project cost and then bond scenarios. And I do have Chris Gander, our Municipal Financial Advisor with Bank of Oklahoma here, and he will be joining me up here in a minute. So we heard the construction estimate of $7.2 million just a few minutes ago, but it does take much more in cost to actually open a facility like this. And so that's what this slide is representing, is that overall project budget. That does equate to what's being proposed as the general obligation bond amount of $8,750,000. So that includes the $7.2 million of construction costs, as well as the cost to issue the bonds. It includes things such as the IT equipment, expanding fiber to the facility, the design services that the architect is providing is provided for here, as well as a little bit of FFNE, furniture fixture and equipment that is not included in the construction estimate. And then we do have a line for contingency. And that's just for the unknowns. It's very early in the process. It's very early in the design. And so we felt it was important to include some kind of contingency. So now I'm going to invite Chris Gander up here to talk about the scenarios for the bond. bond.
Kristy, before we do that, I, I think it's important for us to talk about an issue that came up with the fire station, which is when we fund something like this with bonds, any money we spend ahead of time, right, which we've spent already some money on design and looking into this, this is not money that we can recover from the bond funds.
Actually, in this case, we are able to recover that because the council did pass a reimbursement resolution.
Okay.
We thought ahead, we learned from our experience with the fire station and we thought ahead and that action was taken.
So, but to that, to the extent that we can do that, we still, in trying to plan for how much bond money we're actually going to borrow here, we, we, we're not going to go through and do full plans of this facility before the bond is passed.
Correct.
Right? So we've got all of those expenses, we have to plan for all of that stuff, not really knowing exactly what's going to happen.
Correct. There are still many, many, many unknowns.
Which, you know, is somewhat silly, right, to try to figure out how much are we going to spend without even having done a somewhat extensive plan, just these sort of conceptual plans is, is one thing, but actually going through and finding all the details and this is not how you would do most home projects.
Generally not.
Which is really annoying, but I think people need to keep that in mind when we're trying to, I mean, a half million dollar contingency number seems high, it's actually probably lower than what we would want to see on a project like this.
I think our, our engineering staff would agree with that comment.
But there are a lot of, as we saw in the fire station, it's just a lot of unknowns because we have to ask for this money before we go spend the bulk of it, even in planning. So.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Thank you.
And we had a huge inflation hit on the fire station, too.
True.
So Chris Gander with BOK Securities. I've got this, yeah. I feel woefully, you know, I have no dogs, no cats, sad, just numbered table Excel sheet. So here to talk about some different options as it relates to general obligation bonds. As you all know, you paid for the fire station with an ad valorem tax or a geo tax. So before we kind of get into the numbers here, I, I can, I can just kind of go back over some, some basics. I know all of you have slept since we did that. So, I mean, one of the first things, you know, we're talking about GOs, we're talking about property tax, you hear say ad valorem tax, it's, it's all pretty much the same thing, just kind of for everybody's information. I mean, the city doesn't collect any property tax for operational purposes. The only way they can access property tax is through a general obligation bond election. And then we authorize a dollar amount and then we levy a tax to pay that dollar amount back. So currently the, the tax, other than the, the little bit that goes to the fire station, it's going to go to the school district, the VOTC and the county. That's, that's where the majority is. And so if it passes, all the money has to be used for this project. I mean, so if you pass, I won't get into the other options, but it, in the sense of the money is specifically for this, it can't go to streets or some other thing like that. So it's pretty straightforward as it relates to property tax, kind of rehashing this, but you know, we're authorizing, once again, we can't set a mill levy, we can't say, okay, we want the mill levy to be two mills or three mills or, or seven mills. We authorize the project dollars, which goes back to the $8,750,000. So that's important when we get back into the table and we talk about the specifics there. And then with GO bonds, the other thing is per state statutes, the principal is the same every year. From year one to year, whether you have 10 or 15, 20 years, you have the same principal payment, which means your first payment is higher than your second payment and your, your lowest payment is your last payment because you're paying less interest because you have less principal outstanding. So it, there's this kind of massaging to what's our target and how are we going to get there? So that all feeds into this top table here, that we've got a 10-year option, a 15-year option and a 20-year option. And I say options, you all could tell me, we want to do this in eight years and I could update this and bring it back to you. These are just saying, hey, you know, here's, here's kind of what it would look like at different terms. So I'm just going to work through 15 because it's right in the middle, but on the 15-year option, so to the left, you've got the $8,750,000 and then 15 years, I'm going to work across and explain what each of these numbers are. The 15-year option, the estimated maximum levy is 3.93. That's for both the existing levy for the fire station and the animal welfare. So the increase would be 2.33 mills. So right now your, your mill levy is at 1.6 that's paying for the fire station. So then you go into that next block and we're saying, how much does, would that cost on a $100,000 house? That would be, and this is the new part, it'd be $26.56 per year on a $100,000 house. And so you can work your way across to the 400,000 and then you go to that, to the far right, and we're just breaking it down by how much does it cost per month? So if you look at 15 years, $300,000 house, it's $6.64 per, and I say per, I should, I should clarify that, that's how much the high watermark would be. That's the high year is what you would pay. So it's better to, as the public sees us to kind of see the highest number, not the lowest number. So in here, we talk about the average home price and the median home price is around 240,000. So on that, it'd be about 550 per month on that house at the high watermark, once again, because we're going to have a lower, lower, but on average, it would be $2.75. And, and that's if you did it for 15 years, the high watermark would be 550 per month and then on the average, it'd be about $2.75. So I mean, I know there's a lot of numbers of what do these mean? I mean, right now your mill levy, I didn't even, it, it's going to be 100, I don't, I've got it over in my file there, but you just, let's just call it 100 mills. So I mean, it's a, this is a pretty minimal amount. I thought it was interesting, we did work on the more animal shelter it was paid for by property tax and their target is 16 mills constantly and as they get one project done. Once again, because you have the debt service going down each year, they do a new, we, we do a new bond issue for them every year to maintain the 16 mills. So they'll do a fire station, they'll do a park, they'll do an animal welfare. So I, once again, I'm just trying to put what does these random.
Reiterate that for a second. What's our millet rate in Stillwater for city projects right now?
Well, it's 1.6.
And what's Moore's?
16.
16?
16, yeah. And in Oklahoma City, I mean.
In case you're wondering, why other places have things that we don't have, 16 mills every year continuously to pay for projects like this?
It's, yeah. And a lot of the community, I mean, Midwest cities, 11, Oklahoma City, 16, and they're all kind of in that, the ones that have them are in that range.
Huge difference.
There's one other thing you said that I didn't, I, I wanted to make sure we didn't just gloss over, as you're talking about how much it would cost annually for the increase in property taxes, that's the highest amount and then it would go down slightly every year because of principal payments.
That is correct. What we're showing here is the.
So the $53.12 for a $200,000 house at 15 years, that's the high mark and then it would go down slightly each year.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
It, it really will average about half of that over the, if you do, if you all chose to do a 15-year, it's going to average about half of that. I mean, the, the lowest year is going to be, go ahead.
I was just going to say, can you remind us the, the fire station bond amount and term?
It was 20 years and the total dollar amount, 9 million.
9 million.
This is very similar. I mean, and, and that goes back to, you know, we could, we could do it 20 years. And the other thing I didn't mention is we have talked about and it has to do with it, it's sitting out on the, the airport property, kind of like the fire station was on the campus. For it to be a GO, it has to be exclusively owned and, and there's some other laws to do what's called an unlimited tax GO, but there's some more flexibility with what's called a limited tax general obligation bond. So this would be the same as the airport, same as airport, same as the fire station, a limited tax GO bond, so LTGO, which means no matter what happens, it can't go above five mills. There's a, there's a cap. All these others, normally there, there is no cap. I mean, people do what they say to the voters, if this is our target, we're going to be very close to our target. But God forbid you have some kind of natural disaster and you lose half of your value of your city, well, the only way to make payments is for your taxes to double, right? And that's just a simple mathematical equation. So, but that wouldn't be the case in a limited tax GO. You're, you're capped out at five, so you just have to be, pay out of a longer term. So, so it's straightforward. I mean, my recommendation, once again, there, you don't have an action, so it's really you all can talk about it, come back at the next meeting and, and see if you guys want to move forward with this. But as it relates to, you know, do I have a recommendation? I mean, there's not a right or wrong answer, it's just what do you think the voters would want to see? You know, you want to pay less for longer or, or, or more, pay it off quicker and, and you know, there's kind of a balancing, but I, I think 15 years for this project or 20, I mean, that'd get it more in line with the fire station. But at 15 years, because you're already a couple of years into the fire station, these would be paying off, this, actually this would pay off about two years quicker than where the fire station would be as of today, because it was a 20-year.
Is there a, do you know the total over 15 years, like what's the total payback versus what it would be over 20?
I don't have a.
I, I did look at, just, I, I looked at what people would be paying and the difference. And so for a person that has a $100,000 house, for a 10-year bond, they would pay $334 total because they're paying $33.40 each year. Over 20 years, they would end up paying 468 total. So it actually increases what people pay in totality by 40% if we go from 10 years to 20 years.
But this is the max and not, I mean, I guess the math is probably the similar, the numbers are different, but.
Yeah, and it's, it's a good question. That's one of the reasons you don't look at doing 30 or because it's like, I feel like you're just, you're just paying interest for so long and not getting, but once again, because of the rules, we have to have level principal, it, it's pretty much, if, if you increase the term by 25%, you're probably paying 25% more interest, except, you know, you may, the interest rate is probably going to be a little higher because you're going longer, you know, that's generally the case. So that's approximately what I'd estimate it to be.
Speaking of interest rates, what interest rates assumed in these numbers?
I think we used about 3.5%. And, and I should qualify all this, I mean, and, and we do this with a lot of school districts, with a lot of cities, so I mean, we're always very close, but there's a lot of estimates in here. I mean, we, we don't know what the interest rates are. What, what we do is we put a package together, we set a date, time and place for the bonds to be sold, we, we advertise and we get bids in, we bring them back to you all and say, okay, here's, here's the rates and you guys award them, award them to a low bid. But as each year goes by, we don't know if, if you're going to get all your collections, who isn't going to pay tax, things like that.
Well, that's, I mean, I think that's a really important point here with these bond issues, right, is that, that we're not guaranteeing this is what your payment's going to be, this is, we're not guaranteeing any of that. Really, I mean, the vote is on, do we borrow this money at this term and sell the bonds? But I mean, these numbers could fluctuate, right? And they depend on our valuation.
They will, they are not perfect.
Right? I mean, like I see in here, you're assuming a 3% annual growth rate in the city's net evaluation. If it's more than that, the number actually goes down, right? Because we're able to borrow against the higher.
That's correct. You're dividing it over a bigger base, that's correct.
And so, so if you see better growth in assessed valuation, which historically we've, we have seen that, these numbers actually get better. So it's, it's tough to talk to people about this, this is, I don't know if you know this, this is actually really complicated and nobody understands it. But, I mean, I think the point that we go to talk to voters about is that, you know, you're borrowing 8.7 million and it's going to get paid back over 10, 10, 15 years, 20 years, whatever it is. These are estimates, you know, in terms of what that actually looks like. And, and from what it sounds like, what you're giving us here is pretty much as mu, as much as, as people would see the payments being.
Correct.
Right? I mean, there's very little chance that it would be any higher than this at any point. And even if it.
Right, right. Because I'm showing the high, I mean, once again, maybe one year could be a little bit higher because maybe we, the interest rate's a little bit more than we thought, but it's going to be, but then it's going to go down every year, every year.
It's going to drop from here for sure.
It's going to go down, down, down until it's gone. Yep.
Chris, I, I think you, in conversations with Kristy Cluck, you mentioned on that 15-year option, the estimated maximum levy being under four, is that a factor? Was there something about staying under four?
It, it's the limited tax GO, it's under five.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're, we, we happen to be under four on that scenario, but yeah, the, the max we could go is five.
Okay.
But once again, we wouldn't even be above four in that scenario.
Is that for one project or is it key to all the projects we have outstanding?
Both, the, the combined, yeah. So you have the, once again, the, the fire station, this one, and both of them have to be combined under five mills, yeah.
So what do you need from us? We got to pick one of these?
Not, not to, I mean, I don't know, maybe Kristy does want you to.
Let me, I have one other.
I'm not in charge.
I have one other question on this. As we're looking at these and thinking about that 5% or 5, 5 maximum that we need to stay under, do we need to be thinking in terms of if there are anything, if there are additional bonds that we are discussing down the road that we need to be taking those into account?
Yes, if those bonds had to be issued as limited tax bonds, so.
And what distinguishes if they have to be limited tax bonds or not? Tell me one more time.
Can you help with that or?
Yeah, you can probably even answer the question. It depends what authority you issue the bonds under. And so in this instance, both the fire station and this project, the property is not owned exclusively by the city.
Okay.
Although the city owns the property, it's part of the airport layout plan, so it's encumbered as federally obligated sponsor land. So that changes the authority that you issue the bonds. And so that restriction is all projects issued under that authority. So we can have some ideas, we look forward to future projects and financing them, what authority we could go under based on ownership of the land. That's what turned on this one. Have anything to add to that, Chris?
That, that's correct, yeah. And we normally wouldn't, specifically, I mean, we would normally wouldn't say, let's do the limited tax GOs. I mean, we do the same math, the levy would be the same, but because of where these are and because of the ownership of the property, it has to be done under the limited tax GO. But normally you wouldn't do it. It's just, it's really rare that you guys would have two projects back to back that are on, have some kind of special ownership of the land, one with the airport, obviously, and the other one with the university.
So if we were to move to do something in parks or recreation on community-owned lands, we could, that would not necessarily fall under the limited.
Correct. Then it would just be up to you all's discretion on what you think the voters would want to approve.
Those have different voting thresholds, correct?
In this instance, this is Article 10, Section 35, it is still approved by a simple majority. There is two other authorities to issue under, one of them is also simple majority, one is super majority, but we're not in any of those scenarios.
So doing it this way, we, we would need a simple majority, 50% plus one?
That's correct. May I chime in on timeline? So we have one more city council meeting in January in order to timely submit a resolution to the election board to call the April 1 election. So I would just encourage council at this time to maybe give some direction to staff because when we do bring that resolution back on the 27th, we will have to include a GO bond amount. Staff's recommending 8.75 million and it will also have to include the term. So if you do have direction to staff, I would, that would be great.
So along that line, I have a question. Contingency money that's in there, 500,000, do we think that's enough? And I'm not one to go, go ask for more money, but I don't want to run into a situation like we did at the fire station where we really got hit with inflation that really hurt us. No pressure, Candy.
There's so many answers to that question. So staff are very focused on the need here and how critical we are for this animal shelter. And so we are doing our very best to stay right on the line. 500,000 is concerning, but we'd rather have the project happen than not happen. And so we, on the cost estimate, we believe we found the best we can find at this very early phase to give us the best estimate we can get. We're not getting everything we want. Rachel and Royce would love an enclosed Sallyport. And so there's some things that we've even cut back to keep it low. If we had more contingency, you guys know my answer's always going to be yes, please. I would, I would, I'm nervous about it because of what we did go through with the fire station. But at the same time, getting the vote to pass so that we can actually have the facility is more important to us than the pain we might go through, but we might not.
Well, I totally understand that. I'm just, you know, I'm having flashbacks to the fire station.
It hurts.
We had a lot of really niceties that was in the fire station that got cut. And in this, I'm not sure we have the niceties that we can go back and cut like we did the fire station. Is that a?
You're right.
Is that a fair assumption?
Yes. There was, you know, there was a patio we were able to get rid of, there was a pretty grand entryway, there were some awnings, there were some, yes, all of that and a ton of value engineering that Crossland had to go through to get it down to what we, what was in our budget. And even then, we were adding budget, we threw in the rural fire fund and we've done some things to try to boost it so we could get just, and you know, and you see the picture, it so we could get just, and, you know, and you see the picture. It's not the picture we had when we started out. And there was other reasons for that. There was a, that number was real dated. And then we went through the 21, 22 crazy with, you know, huge amounts of inflation, 8%, I think in one of those years. And so there's a lot of reasons for that. I also think that even though that's the 500,000 contingency, and I would, you know, that's not even 10% of this total budget. But there might be some hidden contingency in some of these other line items that we can realize, but it's still not going to get us to even 10%.
Okay.
And, yeah, anybody in engineering is always going to say, go higher with contingency. But we also want the facility to move forward.
Well, I recognize that the fire station and that the economy and the supply chain shortages and everything else all multiplied to really hurt, hurt us with that project, with, with the finances of that project. Hopefully, that was one event every 100 years. We won't see that again.
Yep.
It's like a 100-year flood that happens five years.
Yes. We had, we did do Geotech already, and that's, you know, there, there's a landfill at different places out at the airport, and Geotech told us it's not here. So that's a big thing that we, you know, to help with the cost estimate as far as the foundations. Anything else about contingency, cost estimate?
Anybody have strong feelings about the term?
My mind goes kind of to the middle, I guess. It just seems like-
I like the 15-year term. I think it's doable, and it's not, it doesn't increase the amount people are paying significantly enough that it doesn't seem like it's worth, worth getting it paid off five years earlier.
So 8.75, 15 years, a resolution like that for next meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, that's, that means staff will bring that back, and we'll consider whether we want to actually approve that or not. We did not make that decision. We're just suggesting it for the resolution. Okay. Item nine, speaking of resolutions. Item 9A is Resolution CC-2025-1, a resolution establishing the Stillwater Regional Airport Rates and Charges Schedule.
The Stillwater Regional Airport Advisory Board is charged with annually reviewing rates and charges at Stillwater Regional Airport. Airport Director Kelly Reed worked with a subcommittee to review rates and charges. The board is recommending approval of the rates and charges schedule attached to this resolution. Airport Director Kelly Reed is here to tell you what has changed.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is a fairly simple change that we're requesting. These are largely administrative changes. We've looked at the rates and charges for the airport. We've identified that we have a need to go deeper and look into a more comprehensive actual rate changes. But these changes are administrative, like removing copy fees, removing fax fees that we're not utilizing. We did make one meaningful change, though, to our airport rescue firefighting response fees. When we have charters come in, we charge to provide firefighting support to aircraft to Index B, which is our scheduled commercial service, or Index C, which is one higher. We didn't have the opportunity to charge for Index A, which is the lowest. So we were providing those services without recouping costs. So this, that administrative change allows us to recoup costs for Index A. And we are planning to move forward in the spring with a RFP to select a consultant to help us look a little more deeply at our rates and fees. We've started a comprehensive survey of regional rates and fees of commercial airports, general aviation airports, to understand where we're at and where we need to proceed in the future. And we plan to bring that council, bring that recommendation to council in June of this year.
Okay. Councilors, any questions?
I'll just comment that it would be useful in the future when we're approving these, if we see the current rate and what we're proposing changing it to on, on one table.
Further comments or action on the resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number CC-2025-1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution's adopted with a vote of five to zero. Item 9B is a resolution, consider approval of Resolution CC-2025-2, a joint resolution of the City Council, the City of Stillwater, and the Stillwater Economic Development Authority approving the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Agreement by and among the City of Stillwater, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and Kipper LLC. Special Counsel Lisa Hardin is here.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Great. Thank you. This evening, you're considering approval of two related items that will significantly advance economic development in Stillwater. The first is a resolution to adopt, to approve the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Agreement, a collaborative effort by the City, Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and Kipper LLC, the company. This agreement establishes the framework for the initial first two phases of a data center campus with the potential to expand to six phases. Each phase represents a minimum private investment of $500 million and the creation of at least 30 high-quality jobs. Under the agreement, the company will develop the first two phases of the project and related public improvements, while the city has allocated specific water and wastewater capacities to support those two phases. Any subsequent phases will be governed by supplemental development agreements. Additionally, the company has pledged to prioritize carbon-free energy sources, reflecting the input and priorities of your citizens. The second item is an ordinance adopting the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan and Incentive Agreement. As discussed during the public hearings, the project plan establishes the incentive districts and the tax exemptions for each phase, and establishes the framework for key provisions such as the payments in lieu of taxes to the taxing entities, community betterment payments, and franchise fees to the city as well as a project budget. Together, these measures represent a unique and promising opportunity for Stillwater's economic growth and long-term prosperity. We respectfully encourage your approval and welcome any questions you may have. I also want to mention that your staff has gone above and beyond in working with us, with our firm, on finalizing the terms of this economic development agreement. It's, they've done, put in extraordinary work, and we are grateful. City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, I think every city department, planning, engineering, water, utilities, forgive me if I've missed anyone, but it's been extraordinary. We wanted you to know that.
Thank you. Councilors, questions? I feel like we've talked about this a little bit.
Yes.
Quite a bit, actually. And I'll, I'll echo Lisa's commendation of, of city staff. I mean, this is, this is a culmination of years of discussions and work among our city staff, among the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, and certainly Kipper LLC, state, state agencies. It's, it's been a lot of, a lot of work to get us to this point, and certainly a lot of work still to do. But to get to this point, we're extremely grateful for, for hard work of lots and lots of people.
And Mayor, you've also played a key role in making this happen as well.
Well, I appreciate that. Questions or comments about the resolution itself? Is there action on the item?
I move adoption of Resolution CC-2025-1.
Second.
Oh, dash two.
Two, dash two, excuse me.
Second.
We have, I hear, hear a motion and a second to approve Resolution CC-2025-2. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is adopted. It takes us to item 10, ordinances on first read. Ordinance is 3552, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 701 High Point Drive, 701 West High Point Drive, from multifamily intermediate and commercial general to commercial businesses. This is from an earlier item on the agenda. Councilors?
Motion to advance ordinance 3552.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is advanced to second reading. Also on first reading, we have ordinance 3553, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 3118 through 3124 East Fourth Avenue, from small lot, single-family residential to two-family and multifamily, also from earlier this evening. Councilors?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3553.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3553 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3546, an ordinance approving and adopting the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Project Plan and supporting incentive districts pursuant to the Oklahoma Local Development Act, identifying and establishing six incentive districts, designating and adopting project area and incentive district boundaries, deferring the numerical designations and effective dates for the incentive districts, adopting certain findings, authorizing the City of Stillwater and the Stillwater Economic Development Authority to carry out and administer the project plan, ratifying and confirming the actions, recommendations, and findings of the review committee and the Stillwater Planning Commission, approving and adopting a tax incentive agreement, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. This is the companion ordinance to what we just discussed in terms of the data center. Are there further comments on the ordinance?
Do we have to have a second, a separate vote on the emergency?
We will.
Yes.
All right. Well, I move adoption of ordinance 3546.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3546. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that ordinance is adopted. Will there be action on the emergency clause?
I, we declare an emergency for ordinance 3546.
Second.
We have a motion and a second as the emergency. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the emergency clause to ordinance 3546 is also adopted. Ordinance 3551, an ordinance rezoning tracts of land located at 1324 East Sixth Avenue, from commercial general to commercial shopping, planned unit development. Councilors?
Motion to adopt ordinance 3551.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3551 is adopted. All right. I think whenever we do this kinds of thing, it's somewhat anticlimactic. That series of votes that we just took there is probably the biggest economic development, definitely the biggest economic development action that's ever been taken in this city.
Maybe even in the state.
And that's pretty exciting. Probably even in the state.
Yeah.
Before, if you may, Mayor, before she leaves the room, I, I want to thank, I guess, the council for connecting the City of Stillwater with the Center for Economic Development Law. It's been an absolute joy to work with Lisa and Dan. They're the, I mean, they're the experts in Oklahoma Local Development Act, because they helped write it. And they are, they've been terrific. They've been the biggest supporter of the city and defender for us, and it's been just an absolute joy to work with them. I'm so grateful for that relationship we have with them. And so, yeah, thank you, Lisa, for all of your time and passion, and the weekend calls, and weekend emails, and everything you've done to help the City of Stillwater. It has been, we're very grateful.
Absolutely. Amen.
I agree.
Thank you. All right. Item 11, reports from officers in the board. Ms. Cardley?
Request for an executive session presented to 25 OS, Section 307B1, for the purpose of discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining or resignation of City Manager Brady Moore, and an executive session for the same purpose for discussion of City Attorney Kimberly Cardley.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yes, we have some good news to share. Customers will no longer see on the, on the utility bill, the collection line for the PCA storm recovery. If you'll recall, over two years ago, or, gosh, almost three years ago, we had Storm Uri that hit Stillwater and left us with about a $7 million bill for the energy consumed during that time of escalation, during that long, what was, I guess, a week, over a week of extended really cold temperatures. And so the trustees at that time chose to pay half of that bill through the, our rate stabilization fund. The other half, we asked the community to help share in that cost, and that collection was collected in full this last week. And so there will no longer be that line item on bills moving forward. So grateful for our trustees and their assistance in that, half that payment. But we're especially grateful for our community for their portion of paying that bill back.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Good news.
Vice Mayor?
The Stillwater Community Center will present Dancing with Daddy on February 7, 2025. All are invited to spend an evening of dancing, refreshments, and more. There will be two dances to choose from. The first dance is from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., and the second dance is from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. The cost per person is $15. Tickets are required and must be purchased in advance. There will be line dancing, thanks to Tippy Toes Studio joining the events and teaching quick lessons. There's a limited number of tickets, so be sure to purchase your tickets early. Tickets will not be available at the door. Such a great experience for the, the men and children in our community. Lots of fond memories of sending my husband and daughter out to this, so.
Yeah, actually, my daughter's now 14, and I'm not sure she's going to want to do that again. But we did it several times, and it was, it's a great event, so. Counselor Hawkins?
Please join us this Thursday from 5 to 7 p.m. at the Stillwater Community Center for our annual Meet Your Legislators event. This is a great opportunity to ask questions, build relationships, and share concerns with your legislators before the legislative session begins on Monday, February 3rd. Many thanks to the Stillwater League of Women, Women Voters, and the Friends of the Stillwater Public Library for hosting this event. We hope to see you there. It's always a great time to kind of hear about the legislative initiatives and, and things that are going on this year. And so I would, I would encourage everyone to attend if you can.
I discussed that on the radio this morning with Steve Daniels, and I think we said it was at the library. But it's not because of the construction that's happening at the library. It is at the community center. It's been at the library in the past, so if you used to have been there, it's at the community center this year. Definitely a great event. Please be there. Counselor Clark?
Due to inclement weather, the Parks and Community Resources Open House that was scheduled for last week was rescheduled to Thursday, February 20. Please plan to attend this community meeting, as staff and council members look forward to hearing your ideas, suggestions, concerns about Stillwater Parks, community spaces, and facilities. Will be signups, volunteer opportunities, and educational information available. Some preliminary information collected from recent surveys will also be shared. We want to ensure our parks and public spaces meet the needs of our residents and families. The event will begin at 5:30 p.m. at the Stillwater Community Center Lowry Activity Center, which is the old gymnasium. For more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/parks. And on behalf of Counselor Hardin, it's that time of, time of year again to have purchased a rural fire service contract if you live outside of city limits, but within the Stillwater Fire Department's response area. For an annual fee of $200, the contract ensures that response fees for each fire incident on a contracted property will not exceed $2,000. Residents without a contract will still receive rural fire assistance, but will be responsible for paying the full rural fire service fee for any services rendered. All collect, which can be many thousands of dollars, by the way. All collected fees will go toward training, rescue tools, and other fire equipment. For more information and to sign up, go to stillwaterok.gov/ruralfire, or call 405-742-8308.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the double duty. I will let you all know that Stillwater Community United will have their annual unity event to commemorate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This coming Sunday, January 19. The event begins at 6 p.m. in the Stillwater Community Center. Also, the annual unity march with OSU will be on Monday, January 20, beginning at 1 p.m. Participants should meet at Southern Woods Park, and everyone will march to the OSU campus together and join in initial, additional commemorative events on campus. Everyone's invited. Please go to, visit stillwater.org for additional information. I know it's supposed to be pretty cold on Monday, so if it's too cold for the march to, to, to happen, we'll be sure to let everybody know. But be, be watching the weather, because it's supposed to be pretty chilly. Also note that city offices will be closed in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January 20. Trash, recycling, and yard waste will be collected as usual. And then it says, we're monitoring the weather. So I already said that part. We'll share updates if needed. At this point, I will move that we recess the city council meeting prior to item 13 on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess city council. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now be in recess. But at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for January But at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on consent. Please vote. Consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. Item five is the resolution. Consider approval of resolution CETA twenty twenty-five dash one, a joint resolution of the City Council of the City of Stillwater and the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, approving the Stillwater Data Center Economic Development Agreement by and among the City of Stillwater, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, and Kipper LLC.
I move adoption of resolution CETA twenty twenty-five dash one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, or, excuse me, to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Any reports from the officers of the board? Is there a motion to adjourn CETA?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, CETA is now adjourned. And at this time, I will call back to order the Stillwater City Council prior to item thirteen on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the reasons requested by the city attorney?
Motion to enter executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council will now be in executive session.
Motion, motion to reconvene.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeloski.
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins.
Yes.
Councilor Clark.
Yes.
Councilor Harden.
Yes.
The vote of five to zero. We're back in regular session. No action from the executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jeloski.
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins.
Yes.
Councilor Clark.
Yes.
Councilor Harden.